All right, I want to welcome everybody here. And we've actually had a lot of viewers at home, so I'd like to welcome them. Tonight is the Planning Board's fifth special meeting. This is April 8th. Tonight, we are going to review a very rough draft of what we'll eventually send to the Town Council. It is a rough draft because the council bundled 14 amendments, some 45 years of changes in one, and we were only given 45 days to do that. We've done what we can, and we will send back what we can. To just review some things, and most people are familiar faces, but if there are new people. People have been coming up to me, and I'm sure other Planning Board members have been approached and asking us, please don't do this, don't pass this. I'd like to reiterate, we don't have the power to stop this or to implement it. We just send recommendations. In this case, we were not asked for recommendations. The instructions for the Town Council were very narrow and very defined. We are to basically give a thumbs up or thumbs down to the package, and they will implement it from there. I would again reiterate, and people have been extremely respectful, but it did go to last night's planning board -- sorry, I'm very tired and I'm really burnt out over this. I went to last night's Town Council meeting, and things got a little emotional. I ask you to please take a deep breath, just state your case. We don't have a ton of people, so I'll give you plenty of time to talk. Again, if you have already, if you are in agreement with somebody who's already spoken, please state that fact. If you have something new to add, please add it, but it just provides more time for other people to speak. That is what it is for introductions. I have some procedural questions to ask legal. Again, for those who have not been here, there are two types of laws, content law and procedural laws. Content laws, by the Enabling Act, allow cities and towns to shape those state laws. It's powers that are vested to the states from the federal government, from the states to cities and towns. And you'll hear from time to time in this mentioning of the Enabling Act. It has been championed by some people that we cannot, absolutely cannot change a single word of what the state puts down. Both our councils that represent us here, that were hired by the Town Council, have said that's not true. I spent most of the day calling people at the State House and got a lawyer who said, and I quote, "Anybody tells you, you can't, doesn't know what they're talking about." And in fact, at last night's Town Council meeting, they utilized the Enabling Act to pass a tax. So they say one thing, they do another. So there are some things that we will specifically talk about, but that was not within our scope, that is not within our power, and that was not in the instructions for us to change anything. Okay? I have two questions procedural law. One, by, so we were given 45 days, the Town Council's given 65 days. Now, by setting, simply setting the hearing date, does that qualify them that they've satisfied the 65 days?
Well, they'd have to convene that hearing. It seems like that's going to happen, yes.
Okay. So my question is this, we were handed that binder. Some people have said 200 pages, some 300, 400, but it's a few hundred pages. My understanding of state law, and it is not unique to this state, the procedures binding notification of the public of hearings is very strict and very defined. There are three publications before the meeting. The first publication must be the entirety of what is being reviewed, and then the next two can be synopsises of that entirety. Am I correct in that?
So I'd put it this way, having dealt with this in a smaller context, not the binder that you point to. Whenever I've been asked as to how to adequately inform the public of whether it's an ordinance amendment or what have you, my opinion's always been print the whole thing. It's maybe that's Delta suspenders, maybe that's Ottoman abundance of caution. That's how I always recommend it's passed. What is going to happen here is unknown to me, but that would be my personal practice.
Yeah, I think it's unknown to all of us, and this is why I'm asking these things. So if it is not properly posted, that can be appealed, correct? I'm not sure if appealed is the correct word.
Notice is a prerequisite, inadequate notice, proper legal notice is a prerequisite to the validity of an ordinance.
Okay. So if someone challenges the validity of that first posting for lack of completeness, whether it was edited for money savings or space savings or whatever, but it was edited or edited in any other way, and it is challenged, does the process stop? And more specifically, how does it affect that 65-day window?
So I can't tell you that I've seen a challenge before an ordinance was passed. I can't tell you I've seen a challenge in the middle.
So this isn't a challenge to the ordinance, this is a challenge to the appropriateness of the posting?
Right, and I don't think I've seen a challenge as to notice that occurs before the ordinance is passed, meaning in the middle of the process. I don't think I've seen that.
All right. Is that excluded from happening?
No, you could go to, it's up to a judge to decide that.
Okay. And then what is the process to appeal if it is not properly posted?
It's codified by statute in the zoning ordinance. I don't have it in front of me, but it's in the zoning enabling act.
That's fine, I'm not expecting you to.
Sure.
If it is found to be in violation of posting, what happens to the process? Does it start over? Does the 65-day clock still tick? Does it, yeah, it was bad, but it just continues?
Absent order from the court stopping the process, the process would go on.
Okay.
So Nick, what you're saying is someone would essentially have to go to court and try to file an injunction?
Yes.
To stop, right?
Yeah, that was my next question.
And that was in the process, right? And just on, Mark, on your opening comments, I just want to be clear.
Yeah.
While there may be 400 pages in the book, the actual things that get noticed are the, not the supporting materials that we've provided in terms of prior.
Yeah, I know I was going to get to that.
Okay.
I was going to get to that, I wanted to clarify that, but I want to understand this. All right. So if it goes to court and there is an injunction, the process stops, does the 65-day clock stop?
I would, again, this is somewhat uncharted with, and I told you myself, I haven't seen a challenge in the middle of the process. I would expect that question timeline to be taken up by a Superior Court Justice if and when injunctive relief were addressed.
Okay, all right. Another procedure. This was drafted as a whole package and sent to us as a whole package. And both you and Attorney Craven have been very specific, and both of you have been fantastically helpful. One, that we had to follow the instructions of the Town Council, which were very narrow and very defined. And two, that we needed to make a decision on the whole. Last night, the Town Council announced that they were actually going to break it up and make decisions on the individual. Are they not, as they initiated this, they passed this down, aren't they obligated to the same procedural law that we are?
So I think it's more of practical advice on, for our purposes, how to deal with what you were tasked to deal with. I think the only way at the time, on a short timeframe with a binder material, was to do it at once. And then in your report, which we have a draft up tonight to address those individually, how the Town Council's going to proceed, I don't know. Is there a framework in place for how to proceed with 14 amendments? No, there isn't. So I don't have a crystal ball, I don't know how they're going to proceed. We proceeded in a manner, I think the only manner, that made sense, given the timeframe for us.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on procedure? At this point in time, I'll ask for the roll.
Steven D. Simone.
Here.
Rupert Brady.
Here.
Thomas Callahan.
Still here.
Dr. O'Neill.
Here.
Mark Brady.
Yeah, I feel the same, haven't left. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I never spoke before.
Thank you. All right. At this point in time, I want to state that we have submitted a rough, rough draft to the staff, and they have reviewed it. They've sent it back to us, and I just want to thank everybody involved with the amount of mass, and that's all you can call this, mass. It was a brilliant strategy on the Town Council's part. The more and more I get into this, the more, it was a begrudgingly compliment in the beginning, and I got to tell you, it was an excellent process to jam a package through. But people have done human's work, and I am very, very proud to be part of this board and honored to be part of this staff, so thank you very much. At that, I'm going to turn this over to the staff.
Hi, good evening, Jill Sabo, Director of Planning. So behind me, you can see that we've been over this again last Thursday. You can see what the state statute is regarding your review. The draft report that you have references both of those, the consistency with the Conference of Plan and the purposes of zoning, as well as Section 21.1 of your zoning ordinance. Just to recap, we did have four previous meetings where we covered every single topic area, and you can see the schedule up there last night. So we were, good job, everyone, we stayed on schedule night by night, and tonight, here we are. So you do have that draft in front of you. It is a, I just want to say, it is a work product at this point, that's why it does say draft on it. It does incorporate the comments from this board, from everyone on this board. I tried to get everyone's thoughts, even if they were not of the majority. Any concerns, if there are previous recommendations? And I know that also in this report, it addresses information that was provided to you from experts that have come up to the podium and talked to you, whether they were the town engineer or the building zoning official, or even folks in the audience who have explained to you what their, what their background expertise is. So with that, I give you, I believe it's a 29-page report.
I think we provided some copies, did we not? Did we do anything for the audience? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we can certainly make those copies if you'd like. We can put a couple out.
I'd hope to just have a few, even that people could share. And then if the staff could figure out a way we can post this so people can access it. We have tried to be very transparent here on everything we've done, and I'd like to, I don't know practicality-wise, if there's a way to do it on the town's website, but if we could.
Well, Mr. Chairman, presumably after tonight, we will have a recommendation that will be signed by you, and that will be available to the public.
Okay, thank you. All right. Sorry to interrupt.
Nope, you didn't. I'm at the end, 29 pages. Question really to you is how you'd like to proceed.
I'm going to talk to the board about that.
Tom on this one.
Yep. I see him, he's like Jeopardy, he's got his finger on the button. So, Tom, would you like to say something?
No, I just, just for the, for the record, the 45-day period expires when?
We discussed that, we came up with that.
So the 45-day period expires April 17th.
Thank you, thank you.
16th is safer, but I believe I counted 45 days as April 17th.
But that, that needs to be in the council's hand by the 17th, which means.
It needs to be submitted to the council, correct?
So no later than the 15th, I would presume? Give staff the 15th, 16th to forward it, or what kind of lag time does the staff need?
So, Mr. Chairman, after this evening, presumably we'll have a recommendation in some form or another with these 29 pages. I would do any final edits that come out of this evening's meeting, fix all the scribblers errors, typos, things like that, and then it would be ready for your signature by Thursday.
Okay.
Once your signature goes on it, it gets transferred immediately to the town clerk, to the town manager, and to the town council.
Okay, okay. Tom, that answer your question?
It does.
I would like, as a chair, and again, I'm just putting this out to the board, this has never been a top-down organization by any stretch, I think I would like to read into the record the introduction and the executive summary. So at least, and we really wordsmitted this so that the layperson could understand what this means. We tried to, in the executive summary, we tried to take the legalese out, we tried to take the acronyms out, the reference to just statute numbers, et cetera. And if the council, if the board would give me the liberty, I'd like to read this into the record.
The executive summary?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's like three pages, four pages.
Can you speed read it?
What's that?
Speed read it?
I will try to speed read it.
I'm just kidding.
No objection to reading it in. If there are suggestions for consideration as you read through them, how do you want to handle it?
Yep. Not at all a problem.
No, I mean, how do you want to handle it? Do you want to just stop?
Yeah, just stop, and we can, we can address it as we go, or I could just read it, and then we could just go back. I think that would be the smoothest way. Okay, and that way, people will understand in context what's being changed and why. Okay. Introduction. The following action took place at the meeting of the Narragansett Planning Board held April 8th, 2025. After four meetings that were held to discuss the referral of 13 zoning ordinance amendments and one comprehensive plan amendment, meetings were held on March 24th, 2025, March 25th, 2025, April 2nd, 2025, April 3rd, 2025, and now our final one, April 8th, 2025. In attendance were Mr. Brady, Dr. O'Neill, Mr. Callahan, Mr. Friday, and Mr. D. Simone. Dr. O'Neill was absent from the April 3rd meeting with reason. The recommendations incorporated within come as a result of an open discussion and review of the proposed text, along with supplementary materials and information provided by staff, including the building zoning official and the town engineer, and the public with Assistant Town Solicitors and the Community Development Director. Public comments were permitted at each meeting, and comments were received from the residents, including some with extensive planning expertise, institutional knowledge about Narragansett's comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances, and fire safety expertise. Executive summary. The Town Council's draft version of the town zoning ordinance proposed may significantly, made significant changes. They are complex, and thus it is difficult for residents to understand what is being proposed, or what the resulting impacts on our neighborhoods and the character of our community will be. The draft changes are unprecedented in scope, impact, and volume. The council did not communicate to the Planning Board the purpose for the proposed changes, nor what problems they are trying to address. Further, the Town Council's bundle of these sweeping changes affects zoning ordinances that have been developed over 45 years. In one proposal, with a legally mandated 45-day deadline, this puts the Planning Board in a difficult position. This left the Planning Board very limited time to review many complex changes without a thorough understanding of the desired outcome. The expedited review process and narrowly-defined review authority set in motion by the Town Council gives the Planning Board neither the ability to suggest edits or recommend changes, to avoid problems we foresee with the proposed draft language, or to better accomplish the outcomes possibly intended by the Town Council. Instructions by both legal counsel appointed by the Town Council to Planning Board advise the Board that we are limited to a thumbs up, thumbs down recommendation on the entire proposal, proposed changes as a whole. Overarching feedback is that the proposed changes are poorly drafted, with numerous internal inconsistencies. In some cases, the proposed changes are even inconsistent with state and local law. In many cases, it is not clear what the changes are trying to achieve. Thus, it is difficult for the Planning Board to assess if the proposed changes will accomplish what is intended. Our review includes input from the building zoning official, town engineer, and residents who submitted written components, comments, and spoke during the Planning Board meetings. This input includes comments from some residents who have extensive planning expertise, climate science expertise, institutional knowledge of the town's comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances, expertise with fire safety, architectural engineering and design, and project finance. The changes proposed for Narragansett zoning ordinance fall into three general categories. Changing the review process. This is Section 1099, 1117, 16.1, 18, 26, 43, and 44. These changes affect all of those sectors of the town's zoning ordinances. Generally, the draft changes propose to eliminate the Planning Board's review of site plans for development. Proposals that are asking for a variance to the town zoning standards are asking for special exception, currently referred to as a special use permit. The Planning Board review process has been in, specifically authorized through the town's municipal ordinance since April 1973. Sections 4.3 and 4.4 are environmental overlay zones established in 1980s. These proposed changes reduce transparency and opportunities for neighbors to comment on development proposals. Eliminate or reduce development standards. Section 1100, 1117, 1118, 1124, 4.3, 4.4, and permitted use. This is alcohol sales and business zones and restaurants in residential zones. These changes propose to eliminate floor area ratio, bulk zoning standards, reduce requirements for distance that buildings need to be from property lines, setbacks, increase the percentage of lot that buildings can cover, lot coverage, permit two-family dwellings on every residential lot, eliminate the requirement for a special use permit for restaurants, alcohol sales, and businesses in residential zones. These changes also propose to eliminate Sections 4.3 and 4.4, which were environmental overlays zones established in the 1980s. I will already note a change in that because it's not just restaurants. Number three, change housing occupancy standards. These amendments change definitions for household regarding the numbers on related individuals that can occupy a dwelling, add a definition, unrelated person, and change the number of college students allowed per dwelling. The proposed definition for households fails to recognize any types of non-traditional households in today's society. Unrelated persons promotes creation of small dorms and short-term rental changes that will change the fabric of neighborhoods. In addition to the proposed zoning changes, there is a proposal to lead a portion of the baseline section of the comprehensive plan. The baseline section simply provides factual background information that exists at the time when the comprehensive plan draft began. Legal counsel for the Planning Board acknowledged that this is unprecedented action, and they had never seen a comprehensive plan baseline changed before. The Planning Board finds that if adopted, the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance will have significant and long-lasting impacts on development in Narragansett and not consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, nor the purpose of the zoning ordinances. Specifically, the review process changes will reduce transparency and result in less efficient review process for applicants requiring a variance or special use permit. This is inconsistent with the goals and policies adopted by the comprehensive plan, specifically land use goal, LU1. Make local land use decisions in an open and transparent environment based on sound planning principles and with the most accurate and available data. Community service and facilities policy, CSF 2.2. Provide a community with a transparent and open government. The Planning Board finds that the proposed changes in the review process will reduce public notice of development applications and seek an exception to the town zoning laws or seek a special use permit. This will also leave the zoning board in a precarious legal position without a site plan to support their legal decisions, and will open the town to litigation. In addition to reduce notice, many adjacent property owners will not receive notification and will have less opportunity to comment on proposals. The changes reduce the information that the zoning board has for reviewing development projects and special use permits before them. The absence of the Planning Board review from proposals going to the zoning board may delay decisions if the zoning board seeks to obtain review from the Planning Board. Further, the track record of the current process documents that the applicant's time, the time cost, times costs should have been expenses, I don't know why that wasn't changed, expenses, and frustration levels are reduced, and applicants, applications are improved when they are in front of the zoning board after applicants receive feedback from the Planning Board. Thus, the projects approved are more compliant with the town's zoning ordinances than the original application. These changes will require additional staff for both planning and zoning departments to review projects. The review process changes are also inconsistent with the proposed, the purpose of Narragansett's zoning ordinance, in particular, prompting a high level of quality in design and development of private and public facilities, promoting implementation of the comprehensive plan of the town in Narragansett, provide, provide for efficient review and development proposals to clarify and expedite the zoning approval process, providing for procedure for the administration of zoning ordinances, including but not limited to variances, special use permits, and procedures for modifications. The Planning Board finds that the changes in review process are likely to result in lower quality of design and development for projects requiring site review for variances and special use permits. These projects are also more likely to be in conflict with the comprehensive plan. Further, the changes in process will make the process for reviewing variances and special use permit applications less efficient for the town boards and the applicant. Proposed changes to eliminate or reduce development standards result in the development that is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan as stated in these goals and policies. Land use goal, LU2, promotes sustainable growth that builds on Narragansett's distinct characters as a unique seaside community, is within the natural capacity of the land, and provides a healthy quality of life. Land use policy, LU2.2. Promote residential development that strengthens neighborhoods, respects natural resources, preserves open space, avoids sprawl, and reinforces community character. Land use policy, LU2.5. Ensure that growth can be accommodated by existing or planned infrastructure and community services. Land use policy, LU2.7. Guide business development to ensure that it maintains community character in existing commercial and industrial areas. Housing and neighborhood goal, H2. Protect the unique character of Narragansett's new neighborhoods. Housing and neighborhood policy, H2.2. Support residential infill and expansion that is sensitive in its surroundings and does not negatively impact a neighborhood's characteristic. Housing and neighborhood policy, H3.2. Reduce the impacts to residential areas from neighboring incompatible uses. The Planning Board finds that the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance are not consistent with these goals and policies in the comprehensive plan. The proposed change will result in development that is not compatible with existing neighborhoods and community character and cannot be accommodated by existing sewer and water infrastructure, water supplies, and sewer treatment capacity. The proposed changes to the town's development standards are also inconsistent with the purpose of Narragansett's zoning ordinance, in particular, promoting the public health, safety, and general welfare, particularly the fire safety. particularly the fire safety standards for a minimum side yard setback. Providing for orderly growth and development, which recognize the goal and patterns of land use contained in the comprehensive plan. The availability and capacity of existing and planned public and private services and facilities. The use of innovative development regulations and techniques. The use of innovative development, sorry. Providing for the protection of public investment in transportation, water storm drain, stormwater management systems, sewer treatment, and disposal. And providing opportunities for the establishment of low and moderate income housing, promoting implementation of the comprehensive plan. The proposed changes to housing occupancy standards and related definitions. The planning board refers to town council to the change already before them in the public hearing process as well as prior recommendations from planning boards. Housing occupancy standards impact the character of neighborhoods, the quality of life for residents, economic incentives for investors. The comprehensive plan has policies related to these factors that were documented with previous recommendations. There are also related purposes for zoning ordinances that are documented with prior planning board recommendations. The proposed changes to the housing capacity standards, together with the proposal of eliminating development standards, will not create new or affordable housing. Instead, it will incentivize five-bedroom student rentals, expansion of short-term rentals, increase prices for the majority of properties in Narragansett. Investors will squeeze out families and widen the gap between market rate homes and affordable or even accessible housing. Further, the proposed changes will increase the tax burden on seniors with fixed incomes and reduce the state school funding as property values accelerate. In addition, the expansion of two-family houses by right to all residential lots in town will result in the creation of a reckless burden on the town's infrastructure. This will especially impact sewer treatment capacities, which is at 100% in the Westmoreland wastewater treatment facility location. The proposed changes will permanently impact the fabric and characteristic of Narragansett's neighborhoods. The planning board has witnessed the impact from economic incentives that are creating investment and development process that are resulting in the conversion of summer cottages and single-family houses into seasonal and short-term rentals. There is a strong trend of building houses, expanding houses, or tearing down and replacing cottages with houses that have a maximum number of bedrooms. This trend has been changing the character of development in Narragansett and especially impacts neighborhoods with small substandard lots that are not compliant with today's underlying zoning districts but were created for summer cottages. This development and investment trends are negatively impacting housing affordability in Narragansett. The planning board finds that the proposed zoning changes will reinforce and accelerate this trend. For the preceding reasons, along with the details later in this report, the planning board recommends that the town council reject the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance that the town council referred to the planning board March 3rd for review as required by state law. I could read, I think that's, well, no, I will read. Recommendation that the town council seek suggestions for future changes in zoning ordinances. While it is unclear what the problems led to the town council to propose a sweeping package of zoning ordinance changes sent to the planning board for review on March 3rd, we recognize that some recent changes to zoning ordinances need evaluation. We recognize the need that some recent changes to zoning ordinances need evaluations. We recognize the need for more efficient review of applications for variances that are requesting minor exceptions to town ordinance such as sheds, decks, small paved areas. Yet, we also note that the recent changes in state law and Narragansett zoning ordinances have dramatically reduced the need for variances on small lots. Automatic adjustments are now provided in the zoning ordinances that dramatically reduce setbacks for the property lines on small lots and significantly expand the percentage of the lot that can be covered by buildings. Without any of the proposed changes to the zoning ordinances, a house with 3,100 square foot of gross floor area, which is a four-bedroom house, mind you, can be built on a 10,000-square-foot lot by right administratively without any need for public hearings. The planning board intent to evaluate how the changes made for modifications are working after one year was done with the FAR bulk zoning. With FAR revisions we made after implementation for a year to address unintended consequences and improve the ordinance. We suggested council ask the planning board to evaluate how the changes made for modifications are working and suggest any changes necessary in the ordinance to address the problems. Perhaps another review of FAR is also appropriate to examine issues of basements and cellars, which is what the town zoning officer and building inspector said needed to be done. The elimination of FAR will not only impact character and development, would also eliminate the town's best tools for negotiating with developers for affordable, accessible housing units. We also suggested the council ask the planning board to study how two-family dwellings can be best accommodated in light of recent state law changes without creating an unmanageable increased demand in water and sewer infrastructures. We note that the planning board has sent recommendations of council with zoning changes required by the Rhode Island General Assembly in 2024. These changes include new provisions for accessory dwelling units, ADUs, which in many cases function as two-family dwellings. Then we go into background and the body, so. So I thank the board for your indulgences. And I hope I paced that slow enough so people understand. Staff, would you like to proceed from this point?
So, Mr. Chairman, you can either do a page turn or you might suggest that the board go through and they could talk about generally how they feel if there's some thematic changes or edits they'd like to make. It's really, we are prepared if you'd like to put the draft up behind us on the projector or whatever you'd like.
Yeah, first I'd like to note that there were some areas that we all agreed upon.
Oh, absolutely. So we can, yeah, so right off.
So we can kill those off for, I hate to use that term. So we can deal with those first, such as Breakwater Village, I think we were all unanimous on that. I think special use permits for five-bedroom homes, things like that. And I just want to tell Steve, it's noted in here, your comments, I hope you caught that, that, you know, that we didn't all agree on everything, and that's healthy. And we learned a lot from you as we went along. So I think I'd like us to cover the areas that we were in agreement and that we don't maybe necessarily have to review those.
The way the rest of the document is set up is very similar to the report that you received originally, which has the background, and then it goes through each chapter and section and talks about the changes. And then I reorganized it at that time in topic areas, which we have then gone through. We can certainly go through that. I'm not, I wasn't prepared. I was not aware that that's the format you'd like to take. But if you'd like to go through that, we can fumble our way through the.
No, I'd like to go through the most efficient way. The most efficient way, 99.99999% of the times is usually the way you lay it out. So I'd like to proceed that way if we could.
Okay.
This is how it works with my wife, too. Yeah.
Well, then I might suggest, since many of the much of the information in the, either in the chapters or sections as I've laid them out previously or in the topic areas that I've laid them out previously, should be consistent and should be relatively the same. There was additional information that was added into those, and we can certainly do, you know, can go through member by member and talk about that. If there are scribblers errors or typos, by all means, just you can give them to me at the end. I know there were a few of those. But it might be worth starting at the end. So if you go to page 14, it talks about the findings, the planning board review, consistency with the comprehensive plan. So the first couple paragraphs that describe through. And then we talk about, those are the five topic areas, right? So it's the ordinance, the zoning ordinance, consistency with the comprehensive plan, how the amendment will, or the amendments in this case, will affect the town's land uses, buildings, and facilities, how it will affect the town's natural land and water resources, and whether the amendment will affect other regulations. The draft, as you see, breaks down each one of those and touches on any component of the amendments that might have either negatively or neutrally had neutral findings toward each one of those amendments. So does anyone have any questions on that, or do you want to go through that? Are there any changes? Are there any? So I know, for instance, one of the things that I would like, I will add, I will add at the end of this for your final document, is I will make sure that I will go through every single location where you reference a previous recommendation, and I'll put that reference right into this report. The, you know, the date of the recommendation. And I will provide a copy of that recommendation that previously went to the town council, the one that was based upon with the town council's approval. So that way, this town council will have, in cases where you refer to your previous recommendations and you can't find recommendations to support what is being proposed, the council will have those recommendations readily at hand so they can review them. So at every location, the reason why I bring it up is because I noticed it on one of the pages here, that I will make that reference. So if you see that, that's one of the changes that I will do. So does anyone have any comments or concerns right now about the way we've referenced the zoning ordinance for the findings? So if we move along, it's the comprehensive plan. We've talked about how there's no corresponding written explanation, so on and so forth. And specifically, the comprehensive plan hasn't changed since 2017, and we haven't had any other remarkable changes in town either. No additional sewer capacity, no additional infrastructure, no additional water, things like that. So we do talk about that level. If there, outside of what I've mentioned, if there's any additional changes or anything you'd like to add? Mr. Kelly?
I don't know that, I just would ask the following, Jill. For example, when we talk about sewer, our sewer capacity is different in terms of that which drains to Westmoreland versus that which drains to the Scarborough piece. I think in terms of ensuring our credibility as we move through this document, we should be sure to make that differentiation so that I'm not sure that it makes a material difference over the long run, but it is important to acknowledge that while Westmoreland's at 100%, Scarborough's at something less than that. That's the reason why the sewer policy in the town has a little incentive for affordable housing for the south side than it does up on the north side. So I just think, you know, that's an example of something that I think is important as we go through this.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you. And where it was referenced at 100%, Mr. Kelly, and I went back and put it in just to clarify that that is the Westmoreland wastewater treatment facility, not Scarborough.
But I just, there's places where we talk generally about sewer capacity.
Sure.
And I think it's important that we differentiate it for the purposes of not being, not having our legs cut out from underneath us and saying, well, wait a minute. Okay, we've got to be different. That's not true for the south, that's not true on the south side.
Okay.
I agree with that and concur, but I would also like a note on that because the town engineer was very, very specific that he's holding in reserve a sector of that capacity for failed individual septic units, to bring them online. So I think that's an important caveat. So while there is a numbered capacity surplus, in reality, is not as big as the number looks like because he is intentionally holding back capacity.
Chairman, and the other thing I would notice is while the actual treatment capacity at the plant is at 100% in the north and not at the south, the capacity of the lines and the pump stations are also an issue. And I think he mentioned the cost of replacing pump stations and stuff, so I think.
I don't, again, I think we all vehemently agree that this has to be properly described.
Yeah, I agree.
You know what I'm saying? Because I think they just, for example, they just got done doing sewer water on all down Ocean Road last, they did water last year on Ocean Road, yeah, so. But I just, the point of the tale is just to be sure it's.
Absolutely. So I'm looking at it, and it seems like that might be a good location to address all these concerns under the next bullet item, which is Buildings, Land Use, and Facilities. Great. I can add in that commentary, sort of explaining both plants, what their capacity is, referencing the engineer's commentary about holding back some of the Scarborough plant for failed OWTSs, and that way it's in there and we're referencing, so when we're talking about it, we know. And if we're talking about the 100% capacity, I did try to go through and reference it, that's the Westmoreland site.
I have one more note on that, actually, while we're on it, if I may. I noticed that it says in there that we're at, that plant is at 100% capacity. That's not correct. It's, we're at 100% of our capacity usage of that plant. That plant is at like 65%-ish capacity. This is off the top of my head because I don't have the numbers in front of me tonight, but.
I think it's pretty accurate.
Yes.
We have those numbers. Those were presented here, so. And I think that was just some wordsmithing because that's what it was in my notes. It was worded exactly that way.
Sure. So I can think of, Mr. Simone, I can add, I'll just make the reference that it's where the town is at 100% of its allotted capacity. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Natural land and water resources?
I'm sorry, Jill.
Oh, absolutely.
On building land uses facilities. I saw this in a couple places, not this specific piece, but I ask, as you go through it again, you'd be sensitive to it. This sentence is rather I'm trying to think of the right adjective. When it says will not create additional new housing to any measure, it's rather absolute, and it suggests that that could not happen over time. So I would simply suggest in a sentence like that, I would simply say will not substantially create additional new housing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly, which paragraph are we in?
First paragraph under building land uses facilities, first sentence.
Sure, you want me to add in substantially? Absolutely.
Yeah, I've just, that's an absolute statement that it won't add to any measure. And I think, again, for the purposes of being credible, I'm not sure that that's a fair statement.
Thank you, Tom. I was going to say the same. Also, all members of the planning board is under that one. Although now that Tom's made a change, I don't need to change that.
Anything else? So natural land and water resources? So this is one of where I mentioned a minute ago, there are a couple of proposed amendments that don't affect it, like the definitions for unrelated in a household might not directly affect the natural land and water. Or maybe, you know, by all means, we can edit that if needed. So, any comments?
I've got one.
Sure.
At the bottom of that first paragraph there, either locations that have been identified by Coastal Resources Management Council as lands of critical concern or lands developed beyond carrying capacity. Because this is my business, lands developed beyond carrying capacity, two CRMC means go ahead and put one additional septic system there. So it seems like we're trying to say that you can't increase capacity there, but CRMC defines that differently. Maybe that's a question for council.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't, but I think it's I think it's just stating that in many cases, the same locations that are that might be affected by the intensity of development and areas that are not serviced by sewer are the same areas that have these designations at CRMC.
I understand that. I'm just pointing out that that designation, while it sounds like it shouldn't be developed at all, it actually means go ahead and continue to develop it as far as CRMC is concerned and septics are concerned.
Lands developed beyond carrying capacity means go ahead and develop?
That's correct. If you apply for a septic there, CRMC's opinion is that your septic is a drop in the bucket and will not significantly decrease the, you know, natural resources in that area.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm not.
That's fine. Maybe you can leave it in there. I just thought it was worthwhile to point out because most people don't know that. I know the first time I encountered that, I thought, oh, my God, I can't build anything here. And then I applied to CRMC, and they were like, yeah, go nuts. Like.
Well, CRMC didn't.
I mean, that was a paraphrasing. They didn't say, go nuts. They did not say, go nuts. They also did not say, hey, reduce your density here. They said, you're, you're fine.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so for other regulations, this is where we talked about the engineering department and the building and zoning department. Typically, this is where, the location where I would reach out to them behind the scenes as part of our internal review, and they would give you commentary back, which they have done in the past. But in this juncture for these 14 amendments, we were fortunate enough to have both the town engineer and the building and zoning official come and talk to you directly, which I thought was really beneficial. Okay, so again, with the purposes, so we move on to number two with the consistency with the purposes of zoning. So, all of those purposes of zoning are listed out right there for you. I think that was part of the original, the original report. There are some scribner's errors too. I do have my notes here. I'm not going to read all those to you, but I do want to just acknowledge that there are some of those which I will go back and fix. So, specifically, when we talk about environmental, we, what, what actually the chairman has done is go through and take a look at these and then pull out the purposes of zoning, where they have either previously made affirmative findings and addressed those for FAR, these previously made affirmative findings. And then for current proposed amendments for, that one is a little ambiguous, so that one's a tricky one. And then for beer and wine, specialties permits, because there was no previous recommendation for approval where we could pull from those findings, we did, we did put findings on that conflict. So, we addressed the conflicted findings, or the conflicted, pardon me, purposes of And under the conclusion and recommendations, so the opening paragraph should be somewhat similar to what was presented to you at the staff report, but then under, under those topic areas of which we had, I had broken down originally, this is where we talk about all of the information that was gathered, and then specifically, if there was any information not only to be added, but what the board's consensus was. So, just by way of example, under the first one, which is households unrelated persons, it was, in this, in this instance, it was the board's unanimous consensus not to support the proposed definition of household or the added definition of unrelated persons. And then we tackled student occupied dwellings, and this, while it doesn't follow the page, the day that we did, it does follow that format of, we have the, I tried to put in some text, and I know the chairman added, added some text, and then at the end, we try, I tried to put the consensus of what that board was, because this ultimately, at the end of tonight, will be one vote, but I think it was important for the council to hear what you, it's certainly what unanimously agreed upon, and also what the consensus of the board was. So, again, with student occupied dwellings, that was to not support the amendment of student occupied dwelling in the text. Does anyone have any changes to that? Yeah?
Just, just an observation, I think it would be good to be consistent with the format of the, of the perspective. So, in the, on page 21, the top one for households, not his small case, and the second one down, it's all caps.
I missed that one, thank you. So, for specialties permits for alcohol, beer, wine?
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no, don't be sorry. This is what we're here for.
I've got one in there, under student occupied dwellings, the second sentence, "in addition, the board heard from 10 members of the public who did not support the proposed amendment." I'm not going to dispute that because I obviously haven't time, time to go back and review the whole thing, but I do recall one member of the public, this, this is about the five, the five students in a building, or is this just the definition of a student occupied dwelling?
This was the change from three to five.
Yeah, we did have one member that Joe Volpe, in fact, said that this will reduce the pressure on smaller homes to convert to seasonal instead of year round. He did speak in favor of this.
I'll check that for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Specials permits for alcohol, beer, wine sales. Ultimately, the board's consensus was not to support the proposed amendments to remove the necessity of a specialties permit for alcohol and beer and wine for various zones throughout town. Mm-hmm.
Sorry, again.
Nope.
I apologize.
Don't apologize.
I just, I know, it's a lot, and you guys did a ton of work, so I don't want to get super nitpicky. At the bottom of page 21, it says, "it was unclear if this would apply only to restaurants that are nonconforming and residential uses at the time of this ordinance adopted, or if someone could open a new restaurant in a residential zone and a week later apply for an expansion of nonconforming restaurant." I did point out at the time that that is not a permitted use to put a restaurant in a residential zone, so I don't think that's, I don't think we need that line because it's not a concern. I know it was pointed out by a member of the public, but I did respond to that. Not sure if it was clear enough, but.
Mr. Chairman, that was your addition?
No, I stand by it. You can get a special use permit for a restaurant and then come in and apply for a, no, no.
It's a, it's not a permitted use, so you cannot get a special use permit. You would need a, you would need a change in, council, can you get a special use permit?
You can get a change in zoning.
That's not a special use permit, with respect.
But you can get a change in zoning, and people do it.
Subject to the change in zoning, yes, I agree with both of you on those. Bringing people together.
I like it.
Well, again, on that issue, that's one of those issues where being clear in terms of, it is possible, if you change, just add language, it is possible if you change zoning to be able to get a special, to get the link related in there, because I think you want to be clear and accurate, otherwise.
Yeah.
Subject to nitpicking.
No, I was mulling that and trying to write something here that actually makes sense. My brain is like totally mushed, so I'm not sure I'm going to make sense of anything right now.
So, Mr. Chairman, are you working on that? We can come back to the text.
Yeah, yeah, we'll come back to it.
Making notes. All righty. So, environmental overlay districts, it's comprehensive plan. Again, as I mentioned before, we talked about adding in, so this was one where you did not have, while you did have a somewhat previous recommendation for the changing of Section 4.3 Coastal Freshwater Wetlands to comply with the state law, we talked about that last week, and that the current regulation is compliant for Section 4.4, there is, because it goes all the way back till 1987 and before, certainly commentary is back, as far back as the 60s, we added in some language there for the consistency with the plan and mentioned a couple of goals. And it was the board's consensus not to support the proposed amendments to remove the environmental overlay sections 4.3 and 4.4.
Another place where it's not, it's all caps.
Oh, no, actually, it's above, Mr. Friday.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That I missed.
The one below.
Yes, thank you. All righty, so the next one is bulk regulations, which is Breakwater Village discretionary changes, FAR bulk changes in two-family duplex. So, Breakwater Village unanimous consensus to not, capital N, not support the proposed amendments to any section of the ordinance that would change the current regulations within Breakwater Village. Under discretionary changes, adjusting the zoning dimension standards to accommodate modifications and establishing a minimum side yard setback for fire safety. There are definitely some scribner's errors in there and some things I need to put it But ultimately, the board's unanimous consensus was to not support the proposed amendments of the ordinance that would eliminate the minimum side yard setback requirement. And I, I want to ask this board, because was it the minimum side yard setback or all setbacks?
We had concerns with all setbacks, and you're just trying to get fire apparatus.
The minimum setback requirement, okay.
I, I had side yard. If you're going to say unanimous, I'd like it to say side yard, sorry.
Well, but then that throws out the, so we were unanimous on side yard, and majority felt that all setbacks.
Okay, I can do that unanimous on side yard.
There you go.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. Bulk FAR changes. Again, the board's unanimous consensus was to not support the proposed amendments to eliminate a specialties permit for homes exceeding four bedrooms. Regarding the remainder of the amendments, in relationship to.
Can I interrupt, Jill?
Yeah.
Let me, my recommendation would be to take the FAR language and bump it up after the Breakwater Village language, because they're both dealing with the same issue. Seems to kind of, you've got something interjected and be twixt and in between. I think it loses some of its.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, Mr. Kelly. I think I'm wondering why I did it. I think it was just the order that I put them in, in the, I was trying to keep the same order in the document, absolutely. I can move that, I can move that up.
I'd move it up right after the Breakwater Village piece.
Okay, let me just make a note of that. Thank you.
On page 24, Jill, just a formatting thing, where we're saying the purposes of zoning, they all should be italics, just to be consistent with what you did in other places.
Where are we, on page 24, Mr. Friday?
The, the sentence on the bottom of page 23 is talking about the following purposes of zoning.
Oh, right, there's all those bullets, got it. Okay, and then regarding the remainder of the amendments in relationship to FAR, the bulk regulations, the board's consensus was not to support the proposed amendments to any section of the ordinance that would change the current regulations.
Just get one quick one, again, I'm sorry, the one right above that, the board's unanimous consent about not supporting for the four bedrooms.
Mm-hmm.
I thought we had been talking about five bedrooms. I thought, I remember saying five bedrooms.
For homes exceeding four bedrooms.
Exceeding five was what I said in the meeting, because I do think, you know, one for the parents and one for each kid, if you have three kids, makes sense. I don't want to see the town discouraging people having more children. I know when I was a kid, we all lived in the same bedroom, but those, that should have sailed.
The ordinance as it is now is four bedrooms.
All right, I'm sorry, then I had it confused. I guess I'm not unanimous on that one. You just take that whole sentence right out and just leave the, because I did say five in that meeting, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have said four. So, I was confused in that meeting, and I'm sorry. It's, like everybody said, it was a lot to digest over the last four weeks.
It wasn't a permanent vote. It was essentially to come back to.
Sure, I just removed unanimous.
Thank you, sorry.
This one was quite lengthy. This one went through the, the, the consistency of zoning, so it did talk, I did talk about the infrastructure, I did talk about the changes in state law, we talked about consistency with the area consistency. Spent a little bit of time on this one. I will put those bullets in italics. But at the end, it was the board's consensus not to support the proposed amendment that would permit the development of two-family houses by right on any residential lot without regard to lot size or sewer or water infrastructure capacity.
Is that not with all caps or not?
Oris, there we go. And then site plan review. This one was another one that we didn't have a previous recommendation to base off of, so you will see many of the comprehensive plan goal, goals and policies listed there. And the bullets that were addressed specifically from that night. And so, again, at the end, it was the board's consensus not to support the proposed amendments to site plan review for variances and specialties permits.
Question on this one, do we need to have findings about the zoning on this, or?
About the purposes of zoning?
Yeah.
Probably would be good. So, if we go to, let me get to the page. Someone want to help me out, where the page?
Page 17.
Thank you. All right, so there are your purposes of zoning. If your consensus was to find that it was not, the proposed amendments were, are not support the proposed amendments for site plan, I just need, I would need you to take a look at those and indicate to me which ones. Which ones that are not being met?
I would suggest two, three, seven.
I'm, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly, can you just? No, no, understood, I want it for everybody here.
And 14.
Do you also want 15?
And 15, yep, 14, 15.
So, very quickly, just for the, for everyone here, those purposes of zoning that were just flagged for site plan review is not meeting the purposes of zoning are providing for a range of uses and intensities of use appropriate for the character, to the character of the city or town, and reflecting current expected future needs, providing for orderly growth and development which recognizes the goals and patterns of land use contained in the comprehensive plan, natural characteristics of the land, including its suitability for use based upon soil characteristics, topography, susceptibility to surface water, groundwater, values and dynamic nature of coastal and freshwater ponds and shoreline, values of unique and valuable natural resources, the availability and capacity of existing and planned public and private services, the need to shape the balance of urban and rural development and the innovative development of regulations, and providing for the protection of public investment in transportation, water, stormwater management systems, promoting a high level quality of, in design, and the development of private and public facilities, providing for efficient review of developer proposals to clarify and expedite the zoning approval process, and providing for procedures for the administration of the zoning ordinance, including but not limited to variance, specialties permits, and procedures for modifications. I will add those in. And while I'm actually, while I'm thinking about it, we may want to double back for. And while I'm actually, while I'm thinking about it, we may want to double back for... Get there for the environmental one. Where did we? So for the environmental overlay districts in the comprehensive plan, dovetailing off what was previously said, we may want to address the purposes of zoning that are not being met for that environmental, since that one is an old one as well, that's especially section 4.4. And so again, the consistency with the purposes of zoning on 17, but that page is 22.
I'd go 3, too. Natural characteristics of the land.
I'm sorry, did you say you have two?
One.
One, 3, and 4?
One, 3, and 4.
5. 12. 14.
Did you want to consider 15?
It's usually your strong suit.
Did you want to consider 15?
I seek your advice on that.
Well, you want me to ask? Oh, sure. Okay, so 15 says providing for procedures for the administration of the zoning ordinance, including but not limited to variance, especially use permits and procedures for modifications. The environmental overlays would be eliminated, which would be eliminating, eliminating those procedures.
Okay.
Okay, and then thus in some cases, because of the inconsistencies, possibly creating more delay or confusion.
I mean, the discussions we had were about when people come in, the overlay districts allow you to inform folks, hey, you need to pay attention to wetlands.
The special review use, yes. Not only are you, are you, are you in this area, but also depending upon your proximity to that area, it actually comes into play with other regulations of our ordinance that haven't, are not proposed to be eliminated or amended in this.
I'd just be careful there, because it uses the words variance and special use permits, and we no longer have the authority for variances and special use permits.
For section 4.4, we do.
We do.
Yes.
For coastal resource, you're right, you're right. I'm sorry.
Sure. Okay, so again, for the environmental, that's promoting health, public health, safety, welfare, providing for the orderly growth and development which recognizes everything I listed earlier. But specifically for this, it would actually be the values and dynamic nature of coastal freshwater ponds, shoreline, freshwater, and coastal wetlands, and the value of unique and valuable resources, natural resources and features. The providing for the control, protection, and abatement of air, water, groundwater noise, providing for the protection of natural, historic, cultural, and scenic character, promoting the implementation of the comprehensive plan, providing for the efficient review of developer proposals to clarify and expedite, and 15, which I just read, which is procedures for administration. Thank you. The last section is the comprehensive plan amendment. I think the advice at the time was that because we, and Mr. Salutro can correct me if I'm misspeaking, but I think the direction at the time was because the comprehensive, because the process for the comprehensive plan requires that this board have a public hearing for an amendment, and there, as we talked about, there wasn't, this is on, feels like an expedited review because there's so many of them, and there wasn't, and the corresponding ordinance needs, you're recommending non, not approval for the suggested amendments, that there was no action for consensus on this to not support, because you hadn't had your public hearing. Am I accurate on that? Close enough?
I think, I think that our discussions were that we need, and the only comment that we could really make to the town council is that this is a separate procedure, and it needed procedurally to take its own path in a public hearing and go through the steps of the public hearing, and then a recommendation go back to the town council for them to then have their hearing. That was my understanding, that's in my notes.
Right.
Yeah, you're more than free to add your commentary, that's perfectly fine.
So it wasn't a matter of thumbs up, thumbs down. It was a matter of procedurally, this is illegal, and it needs to be done in the proper procedural order.
I think I covered that.
Okay, I'm just clarifying in my own mind.
No, no, that's, but the reason why I bring it up is because I'm not reading to you. The board's consensus was, because there is, we didn't do that, you didn't do that, that task for that item.
I just wanted to make sure.
No problem. And then the last, the last paragraph, of course, is what appeared to be from the last four meetings, what your vote may be this evening. So we can certainly go back through the rest of the document, but I thought that it was important to hit what your conclusions are, what your, what your findings are, and what your conclusions are.
Doc? Want to add anything? This is your time. Well, I'll come back to you.
Yep.
Nope, okay.
We'll wind it up here.
All right. Rupert?
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add.
Can we go back to your introduction in your executive summary, Mark? Just a few comments there.
Yep, we can go back to anything.
Can we do that? On the executive summary, Jill, second sentence, they are complex and it's difficult for residents to understand what is being proposed or what the resulting, what the resulting impact will be on the neighborhoods and the character of our community will be. I'm not sure anyone will know what they will be. I think if we could simply say something to the effect that they're complex and thus it's difficult for residents to understand what is being proposed or what the resulting consequences for our neighborhoods and the character of our community will be.
All right, yep, so you're gonna...
Substitute consequences for impact. And I would say on this particular section, in order to set up the standards that you, that we're using in terms of consistency with the comp plan and consistently with the principles of planning, there's something in this executive summary, somewhere in this executive summary, it should say those are the standards that we're, that we're basically obliged to measure things by. Because it's not included in the executive summary right now.
Sure. So do you want me to add, the suggestion is to add the references to the state law?
Yeah. And then I guess one last thing. We've made clear early on that we, the council did not, in their conveyance, did not provide a strong rationale for what it is that they were trying, the purposes of make or the referral. We say that early on, and then on the second page, second paragraph, last sentence, that it's difficult for the planning board to assess the proposed changes will accomplish what was intended. We've already said we don't know what was intended. We should simply say it is difficult for the planning board to assess the proposed, assess the consequences of the proposed changes.
Still trying to find where you are, Mr. Callahan.
Okay, second, second paragraph.
Page 2, second paragraph.
Second paragraph, last.
Overarching feedback.
Last sentence.
That's to assess...
To accomplish what is intended. We've already said, the council's not communicated.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Chairman, in fact, yeah, in fact, go back up. Formatting on page 2, Jill, the, the numbers there, I think we should put the word chapters in front of the chapters and say zoning ordinance sections in front of those. And all three of those, probably.
I had a question on the executive summary, as it was one of the, one of the changes that came from you, Mr. Chairman. Under proposed changes to, I'm sorry, let me go to page 4. Proposed changes to, and then it's in bold, eliminate and/or reducing development standards. Development standards, as Mr. Salutro just put it, is a term of art. And, and it means something specifically in our, in our ordinance. I'm wondering if we, if the rephrasing could be development, elimination and/or reducing development and dimensional regulations.
Yeah, I like that better.
Okay, so then, then if we jump down, two-thirds down the page where it says the proposed changes to the town's development and dimensional regulations. And if there's a reference in that I missed, I'll change it.
I don't remember one. One of the changes I had has been addressed. I have one on page 3, and I thought this was, I thought I'd changed this, but it doesn't seem to come back. A lot of changes just kept coming back. The computer was done with this, too. But if you go to page 3, third full paragraph down, about three-quarters of the way down, if you look on the left-hand column, zoning board seeks to obtain a review for the planning board. Further, the track record of the current process documents that the applicant's time should be a comma, cost should be expenses, and then a comma, and frustration levels are reduced, and applications are improved when they are in front of the zoning board. And then, now on the notification, on the prior page, page 2, elimination or reduction, reduced development standards, the special use permit for alcohol, you know, it makes it sound like restaurants and other businesses, but, I mean, this basically covers everything from a pizza parlor to a bagel shop, gets, gets a liquor license. And I think, I think that needs to be emphasized here. It's not just, we're not just talking, just talking about permitting a restaurant in a residential zone. We're talking about changing alcohol in this, in this entire town.
So, right, so it's restaurant, and I actually had to put the note in as well, which was restaurant, bar. So it's bar, tavern, club, restaurant, and lunchroom.
Yeah, in that zone. But I think it also covers like pizza parlors and things like that, right?
Lunchrooms, yeah.
Okay, lunchrooms, okay, okay.
So do you, would you prefer the change to say, so in that, that opening under number 2, we'll say chapters and sections, restaurant, bar, alcohol sales and business zones? My concern was that I just wanted to differentiate it between retail sales, a package store.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's different than this, I agree.
Right, so is...
But I don't think the details of just how extensive the reach is of this change. I mean, we are in the midst of a nationwide underage drinking epidemic, and on top of that, we already have an alcohol problems with college students. I mean, last night's town council meeting was just preoccupied with, with that. And that went through this whole process, and people are still questioning. Now you take half of the process away, I think, I think it needs to be stated just how impactful this is, so.
So would you prefer I change the name to, in the opening title, if you will, and then further down in that paragraph, restaurant, bar, alcohol sales, or restaurant, bar? How would you prefer I capture all of it?
You had restaurants, bars, and you said, what, lunchrooms?
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a list.
I know there's a list.
Depending upon if you're under 58, 12, 58, 14, 58, 17, they're defined differently in each type of those special use permit.
Right. But I think if I'm a layperson and I'm reading this and I just see restaurants and bars, I'd be like, yeah, what's the big deal? But it's not just restaurants and bars. It's every pizza parlor in town, every donut shop, anybody can come in now and get one. And that's impactful for the distribution of alcohol, especially with minors and, and college students.
I'll list them all out. Will that work? That way it covers everything. Bar, cafe, club, tavern.
Any, any chance we know how many there are, Jill?
Not off the top of my head, Mr. Callahan.
No, not off the top of your head, but would that be a matter of record, I presume, someplace? Whoever issues the license.
It wouldn't be a document I could go pull out. It would be an analysis we would do.
Sorry, okay.
I wouldn't, let me, it wouldn't be a document I could pull out. Would another department possibly have that? Maybe the clerk's office would have that list, but not, not my department.
It applies to any property in the business, business zones, so not necessarily existing facilities.
No, but existing facilities gives you an order of magnitude to start with.
Right.
Right? If it's easily gettable, it would be great. If not, don't worry about it, Jill. I know we're under timeline here. But it does convey a sense of scale, which might be interesting to see.
So the, the thought is to put the number of existing bars, clubs, taverns, restaurants, lunchrooms that have alcohol service in here?
No, that would qualify.
All to, any, any?
Yeah, any ones that would qualify under this new regulation.
Existing qualify, existing or, or future?
So we have, we have categories, and then, yeah, I mean, in those categories, they could conceivably come in and get a liquor license, and they just have to, and they pass go, collect $200 type thing. It's, you know, again, if it's onerous, I don't think any of us here are asking for that.
I don't know if it's onerous. I would need to talk to the town clerk tomorrow. She may have a list that says, here's all of our, here's all of our liquor licenses. Here they are broken down by, they, the way licenses are broken down is not the way that special use permits are broken down, but I could, theoretically, you want two numbers. You want folks who, you want establishments that currently have some type of alcohol license, and then establishments that could have some type of alcohol license.
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
You want existing lunchroom restaurants, whatnot, that do and don't. We're not talking about all of the lots that are potentially subject to this.
No, that's speculative.
Just the ones that existingly have, either have the license or serve some type of food and qualify.
Right. I think that alone is traumatic. I mean, I can think of, just where I live, I think seven sites that would qualify for, under this.
Okay, thank you. If I can get that easily, I'll put that right in there.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Board, I'm looking for guidance here. My thought is to open it up to public. Oh, sorry, I didn't know somebody else wanted to speak. I'm sorry. Everybody was looking at me like, okay, what do we do with this?
You're fine, Mark, honestly, it's, it's, it's a lot in here. I don't want to nitpick every single word on every single page, so I gotta, I'm gonna lay low for a bit.
Okay. My thought was, and Steve, Steve, I'm gonna buy you some time. My thought was that we open it up to comments to the public, and then after they're done, final, final comments or... final comments or questions or something from the board, and then we can close it up that way. Does that work for the board?
Yep.
I need a motion, but it's just informal survey.
All right. So, at this point in time, I'd like to open this up to the public, okay? That young lady goes first. I've discussed my Italian mother enough, so. You have your hand up, please come up. Again, state your name and your address so we know that you are a resident. Jade, is the red light on?
Okay.
Magic.
Is that better?
There we go.
So, my question is, just a quick question about the sewerage capacity reserves, and does that take into consideration the neighborhoods that are not sewered, such as Great Island or Harbor Island or Sunset Boulevard neighborhood? So, we're just going to ignore that need when we talk about capacity with sewerage?
The, if, and again, anybody on the board, correct me, but my recollection was that the engineer just spoke to the fact that before everybody gets excited about the numbers in the South, that he's reserving, he has planned ahead, and he's reserving capacity for homes that end up with failed systems. How extensive that was, he didn't get into detail. But I remember he just said in the south part of town.
I think that's an important consideration in this calculation.
It is, unfortunately, we don't have the time to do that.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
No, we appreciate that.
And thank you for your service. I appreciate everything that you've been doing.
Yeah, I'll just, let me just, a quick comment on that. The town has now a twenty- or twenty-five-year plan that was developed twenty or twenty-five years ago.
So, it's up to date?
Yeah, so it's up to date. That's the reason why they're out hiring a consultant to update the plan for the next twenty years. That plan, for example, identified three neighborhoods in the South that don't have sewers, that should be sewed at some point in time in the future. None of those areas have been sewed. It's unlikely that they could be sewed, you know, for example, I've lived in one. In order, in order for that, in order for that to happen, you'd have to have pretty strong consensus on the street that you wanted to extend the line. You'd have to have people willing to pay their fair share of extending the line. It's not going to go for free. So, there's reasons why, there's reasons why those neighborhoods have been identified. There's also reasons why those neighborhoods have not been connected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've actually got one extra comment on that, too, if you don't mind. And one of the big reasons that those neighborhoods haven't been connected, actually, because we tried to connect Sunset Boulevard at our expense. CRMC has to approve those, and their response to us was they have a regulation from the seventies, this is paraphrasing, it was some years ago, that they won't extend sewer west of Point Judith Road, was my understanding from CRMC. So, that's another reason that it's going to be difficult to get sewer into those neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else make comment? Yes, sir. Again, state your name and address so we know who you are and where you're from.
Yes, John Haley Tenroldenest Drive in the village of Point Judith. So, very brief. When you put this response submitted to the council, how do people know that you have submitted it? Is there a mechanism where you could check where it says, yes, this is done, or do we wait? I'm just curious.
Outside of the fact that we have a hard date.
Yes.
Staff, can you go through how?
Sure, you can call our office.
Oh, okay, I'm just, I'm just, you know, just like anybody, this is a big deal.
Yeah, no, we don't typically post them online. They will get posted, it will get transmitted to the town clerk, to the town manager, to the town council.
That's good.
I'm not sure if they would put it on, if the town council would put it on agenda other than the agenda that they've already, the schedule they've already set for May 5th, but you can certainly contact our office.
Okay, the deadline's the 17th.
Okay. And is there any means, no, if you can think of any means that electronically we could post it so people could have access to it, would make it easier on the staff rather than people coming in?
Yeah, we can look into that, sure.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. The second question I have is, whenever I speak publicly, I try to be absolutely certain that my arguments are based on a hundred percent fact. In fact, my back, my fundamentals are, they'd be irrefutable. Last night at the council meeting, I was surprised and embarrassed by Attorney Callahan when he challenged me on one of my facts. So, my actual question is for the attorney, if I may, if I could go through you.
You agree with that?
Okay.
So, come through me, and I'll decide whether or not it goes to the attorney.
My question here is, on March 18th here, at one of the meetings, the attorney emphatically stated with certainty that state law required the council to hold a public hearing within sixty-five days of the planning board's response. My question is, does the attorney still stand by that? And if he doesn't, what additional research did he do that changed his mind?
Okay. So, Nick, you weren't involved in that, so do you want to comment on this?
Actually, I talked to Attorney Callahan about that, and the issue was raised, I'm going back in memory, the issue was raised, and the town council decided to hold it within the sixty-five days, so any argument was moot point, so.
Okay.
I'll leave it at that.
All right. So, the issue was raised, but the council is, took it upon themselves to make sure that they had their first meeting, the first public meeting on this within the sixty-five days. So, it's a moot point either way?
Okay, I don't agree with it's a moot point, but I'm done. Okay, and the final thing is, thank you all for your efforts, everyone. It's appreciated by a lot of people.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to talk, speak, say their piece? Yes?
Jill Lawler, Sarasota Avenue, I just want to come and thank you, everyone, including you, Steve. I know you're here, you're doing your, you know, what you're here to do, but I appreciate the time and service you're putting in. I know we just sat through fifteen hours of meetings and thought, but I know that you all prepared, staff, everyone here, all five of you prepared, many hours before that. So, I just want to recognize the amount of work you put in, the amount of what I still hold from the first time I spoke in front of you. They don't know what they don't know. They have no idea how much, how much work they had you do. They don't even know why they had you do it. So, thank you for everything you've done, thank you for your service, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Sir?
Steve Ferandy, 44 Sylvan Road, I want to echo what Jill said. Thank you for all your time, members of the board, and all the time that went into this, and, you know, it sounds really good, what's happened in the executive summary and the rest of the report, outside of a few changes. You could maybe split, split in half a little bit. I think, Tom, consequence and impact's very close, you could put both words in there. Only kidding, whatever you guys feel will do, it's a good work product that you put in. And if it's, if we're down with the ghost kind of things, then it's good. Thank you. Appreciate all your work.
Anybody else? No, seeing no one else. I'm going to turn this back over to staff. Anything you would like to add?
Nothing additional. Like I said, I would like to reserve the opportunity to go through and cross my Ts and dot my Is on this.
We would ask nothing less.
And I will make all of the edits that were brought up today, and I will try to find the information for the restaurants, and I think that's all I have.
Thank you. You're going to disconnect your phone now?
Two days.
Two days, all right. Doc?
So, with those edits, this document then goes forward to the town council?
Yes.
And I just, I just have to say it, the idea of only hours and the effort here being put on this board, the way it was done, it's, I don't have else to say, it's insulting. It's the idea that we have a new council, they're in for the last few months, and they create this, these fourteen items, well, thirteen, that are, I guess, legit, but this, with no explanation. And then to say you've got forty-five days to respond, you know, legally, and I have to say it, do you really think they care what we say? Do you really think so? They would never present this. Think about it. In a reasonable, rational way, you would explain, why do you want these fourteen things changed? And it's just, it just, really, I'm just absolutely, obviously bothered. I've been on this board a long time. We've never been treated this way. And granted, the town council always take our advice, and they go, no, 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 they're the town council, they make the rules, we don't make them. But they always respected the fact that, well, you know, we've got five people here all these hours, what about our planning staff? How many hours and hours they put into this? And it just appears it doesn't make any difference what we say. They want these fourteen items, and they're in charge, they make the rules. It's just, the idea that they would disregard the fire and safety and rescue obligation of a setback, the idea that they would introduce that. It's either ignorance, or I don't care. It's dangerous, it's just, well, you can tell where I'm coming from. I just, I think my colleagues here are, to be commended, for keeping their cool, but I just can't. I just think this is disgraceful.
Thank you. Rupert?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I'd like to thank Ms. Sabo and her staff for their Herculean work, providing us with background material, and facilitating the five special planning board meetings for this work. At the same time, continuing to review site plans, subdivisions, and preparing for budget meeting. So, yeah, incredible amount of work that's been done last, last week. And I think the, I think the report before us captures the essence of the discussion, the key points. I think it would have been nice if we had more time to be able to go back through all the comments that were submitted and cross-reference comments from Mr. DeLuca and some of the others that provided them, but I think, I think, to paraphrase Ben Franklin about the Constitution, it's not perfect, but I think we can beat it to death, and I think it's, it's ready for sending to the town council.
So, I'll say, first, Nick, we, there is nothing here that runs the risk of not being compliant with what the law requires. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Second, I'd like to ditto.
You just stole my first question.
Sorry. I'd like to ditto the remarks that Rupert made with respect to the, Jill and the team did a great job in a compressed timeframe, and you're to be commended for that. I think, second of all, while we don't have the authority to say yes or no, and Mark's been very clear on that, what we do have the authority to do is use our best judgment to influence the outcome, and that's what this report is designed to do. The report is designed to provide the council with a thorough, professional analysis that is informed by all of you who've been here, those of you who have written. And on that subject, Jill, you know, in the report, if you could not only reference the number of people who've been at the meetings, but also reference those who did not attend the meetings, but I think we've got at least a dozen, couple dozen people who had written in at one point in time, and I think those messages have been forwarded on. So, it would be, I think, important to convey to the council the level of interest that's here. But that's where, that's where our authority lies, that's where, to the extent that we have any power, that's where it lies. It's the power of the pen, it's the power to write something that's insightful and incisive, and is, can't be undercut, and that's the reason why I want to be very careful on that. The last thing I'll say is this, to, there have been three members of the town council that have attended these meetings over the course of the last two or three weeks. Two of them sponsored this, Councilmember Colonies and Councilmember Vicnali, and Councilmember Durkin, who was not a sponsor, but obviously voted for the referral. They heard people like Doc, people like Jim, people like myself, scratching our heads, trying to figure out why, you know, what the purpose behind this was. It would have been helpful for either any of them to stand up and come forward and tell us what they were trying to accomplish. For whatever reasons, they chose not to do that, and I guess we will see, hopefully, learn a great deal more about this when the, when the public hearing is scheduled, starts on May 5th. So, that's it, thank you. Steve?
Sure. I'm also going to start by thanking staff. This was a tremendous undertaking. You did an incredible job getting all this together into us so that we could have these meetings and get them in in the forty-five days. It's very impressive. And I'd also like to thank my fellow board members. This has been an education. I know this is unprecedented, but I'm usually over there, not over here, and to get this baptism by fire, I appreciate it.
Well, this is, this is, this is the summer course. Usually it takes about a year for somebody to get up to speed, even with people with knowledge. This is not an easy thing to grapple with. I had, all day I've been writing notes, and it ended up being a small novel, and I'm not going to inflict that on my, my fellow members. Tom put something in the coffee he gave me, won't give me the antidote unless we get out of here before eight o'clock. I, too, want to thank the staff and this board, Heidi, everybody in the office. Some people become strangers to their children, and that's sad. I know the time that I've had to take away from my wife and my personal life wasn't necessary if this was done right. As I've mentioned a number of times from some gracious people, and I'm not going to be gracious, is it mentioned that this town council is new, and they don't know what they are doing? I judge people on what they do, on their actions. It comes from two immigrant parents who raised me that way. I'm a product of the United States Maritime Academy, and I swear an oath to the code. You cannot take this amendments, this bundle, in a vacuum. This is part of a larger strategy. A strategy that, based on the comments, not once but twice, of an existing sitting counselor, was decided before they were even sworn in. This board's longtime, and I think Nick would even nod his head, considered one of the better, if not best, manuse attorneys in this state, was removed without cause because he wasn't liked by certain factors. This council, without asking a single question or even introducing themselves to anybody, immediately started a campaign to discredit, criminalize the planning board, to discredit what we do, and, more importantly, our recommendations. Think about that. This board, this council, removed an incumbent member, who, Steve, no disrespect, because you bring a different perspective. They removed him. I'm not going to get into details because he would be upset. And replaced him.
And replaced him with a builder. And I think Steve brings a good perspective for us. I'm done in November, I've already been told I'm gone, and that was before even this started. And I will be replaced with a builder or landlord, and then Doc will be gone before their term ends. That means that this will no longer be an independent board. This board was totally independent. There are communities in this country who have statutes that forbid builders, developers, landlords, real estate agents, brokers, mortgage lenders, from being on zoning and planning boards to maintain absolute independence. And none of us were related to anybody, except Doc birthed everybody. And then this came down. It was a brilliant strategy, and I actually mentioned it to the council's, the town council's counselor, and I said, what kind of strategy is this? He smiled and said, a good one. This was intentional, this was decided on, and this will pass. The sad thing is, it will cost, and to whom? We know who gains from this, a sitting counselor and a small group, and I will defend builders. I will defend them to the death. I don't think this represents the majority of builders. I don't think this represents a majority of landlords. Most take pride of being here, most take pride in who they are and what they do, and they are committed to doing things right in the town. It is a small fraction who, and I quote a counselor, "All I want to do is go in and get a building permit and build whatever I want." It is that faction that is driving this, that will cost, it will cost the town its character, its soul, and its fabric. But this goes even further. If this council has any intentions of being anything other than a one-term council, it is probably based on their hope that by the time the election comes, people will have forgotten about this. They did it right off the bat, and people have short-term memories, even in this town, who still talk about things that happened in the 70s, but I don't want to go back to that. It's sad, it's sad. This is an action founded on greed and profits, not on children, not on families, not on community. I think we've done a yeoman's work, I'm very proud of this group, I'm proud of being part of this group, and I'm proud of what we were able to put together, even though it doesn't meet our standards. And we're done here. Unless anybody else has anything to say. Staff, anything to add? Staff, anything to add?
No, just when you're ready to get to the motion, I want to...
Any, anybody on the board have anything to add before we close these out? All right, go ahead.
Of, of course, but I'm not going to.
Let's get to it.
Okay. I need clarification on what this motion can say, and more importantly, what it cannot say, so that we are in line with procedural law on this.
So, Mr. Chairman, I did provide some language at the very end, on page 29, which references everything in the report, that the planning board finds that the proposed amendments are not consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the goals and policies, the implementation program, and the other applicable elements, that's language taken straight from state law, and further, that the board has recognized and considered the purposes of zoning and finds these amendments, amendments do not meet those stated purposes. That should get you started, is, in, Mr. Chair, I would go with that.
I would just add, subject to the edits discussed this evening, which Ms. Sabo will incorporate, as well as she mentioned adding citations to past recommendations of this board, there's various parts of this report where past recommendations are mentioned. I think it's appropriate to have a citation and maybe even attach those past reports to this report for completeness.
Okay, yep.
Mr. Chairman, so I make the motion as discussed, I'd like to add to it, supported by the binder of background documents provided to the board when we were going through this, and the testimony received over, excuse me, over 16 hours? And send this to the town council.
Hold on, staff. I was going to, I was going to second the motion. Oh, staff put her head up, so I defer quickly.
Just, oh, did you, just out of a question, you did receive several exhibits over the last four or five days, are you intending to incorporate those as attachments as well? Okay.
Yeah, I am.
Thank you.
Can we attach the YouTube videos of these meetings to that, too?
I can put a link.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All right, now, again, procedurally, Nick, based on your comments and our other attorney's comments, if you find fault with any of this, you have to find fault with all of it? Or is there some breathing room for some people who aren't comfortable with most of this? And I'm not throwing stones at you, Steve, I'm trying, I'm trying to, to honor you.
I think that's the beauty of the report that's in front of you. It documents in a chronological fashion all of the opinions of this board, that's why we went through the task tonight, Steve had a few things he wanted tweaked, that's exactly why we did it. So while it is one motion to accept a report, that report goes one by one, addressing each and every amendment. So I think it does both.
Okay, so we're, the motion is to accept the report and all the documents attached, including video, and forward it to the town council.
Subject to the edits discussed tonight, subject to certain amendments by Ms. Sabo.
The motion is to recommend approval or denial.
Okay, all right. Well, I thought, I thought we...
And to send this report to the council, right?
Yeah, I, please take time on this, because I want this right. That's it, that's what I thought. Not denial or approval.
Which is why the request is so weak. How the hell can you do that?
It's a little self-fulfilling request. Staff?
Right, so Mr. Slieter and I were just discussing, I think the overarching, the overarching end game is to get the report to the town council with, and to our charge with giving a recommendation, I just want to point that out. So the recommendation, in this case, if it's one recommendation, with all of this information, understanding, you know, that there's, there's an exception to every rule, right? So there are some folks who, we had unanimous, we had unanimous consensus, we didn't have unanimous consensus, but ultimately, there would be one recommendation that would go forward.
So, we can recommend simply to forward our report to the council, because it has all our recommendations.
No, I believe you need to make a recommendation, and your report backs your recommendation up.
Counsel, are you good with that? Because everything everybody said is, we're not making a recommendation anywhere, and I do not want to get caught in a procedural bind.
Sure, so let's look right at the law. You're tasked with reporting to the town council, giving your findings and recommendations as prescribed, basically consistency with the comprehensive plan and the purposes of zoning. Your report does just that. If you want to make a motion overall rejecting this and not approving this, and having your report supplement that, I'm comfortable. Your report covers everything that you need to cover, by law.
Still looking for verbiage that I'm comfortable with, guys. I'm sorry to be a jerk about this, but, I mean, they were very specific about what they gave us, and I don't want them coming back. I mean, they, they are constantly saying we do things illegally, and we don't, and I want the public to understand just how strict we are with the law. So, right now, we've gotten to the point where we've agreed to forward everything, all our findings, I'm not even going to say recommendations, all our findings, all the attachments, including video, testimony, and everything else. Is that sufficient enough for us to approve that? And I'm sorry to the board, I don't mean to...
Oh, while he's thinking about that, they're not asking us for recommendations?
No, they're not.
They're presenting these 14 items up or down?
Yeah, and that's what's been explained to us.
They don't want our recommendations. Thank you for all your hours.
I don't believe their instructions included a recommendation. I mean, both you and, and attorneys said thumb up or just some down as to the package.
It's not their instructions, as what state law governs. That's why the report is so important to this, because it's so comprehensive and checks all the boxes, if you will. Jill's just checking one thing before we proceed.
And I would point out, if this was done the proper way, we wouldn't be doing this right now.
I think, I think we've reached a consensus. Jill brought to my attention, and this is fine procedure, in this board's past history, there's been, always been a vote of approval or denial. We can still do that, it seems like we have a majority here. The caveat that I would add, and consistent with state law, is however it gets there, the report get there. So, there may be a motion to deny the amendments and to approve your report outlining the reasons for that denial.
Okay. Anybody want to modify the motion?
Two motions?
No, I'd keep it, I'd keep it all...
Keep it on one motion, and you can do what he said. I just want to ask a question. Go ahead. It's possible, if we had two motions, that we might have a unanimous vote on one and a split vote on the other.
If you, if you'd like to break it up into two motions, you can do that as well.
Okay, all right. So, I'd like to make a motion that...
Don't you have to withdraw or make the previous motion?
Yeah, we, I was about to say, we have to withdraw the last motion.
I withdraw the previous motion.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the report that we discussed this evening, with the addition of the scribner notes, subject to the additional notes that Jill's going to make, with the additions of the binder, the reference to the YouTube videos, and am I missing anything in particular?
Sure, so it's subject to the edits, citations, attachments, supported by the binder, and testimony and exhibits, and as well as a link to YouTube.
And I'm, and that's the motion, first of all, on the report, conveying the report to the town council.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right, so the motion is to approve the report itself... And convey it to the town council. And convey it to the town council. Prior to the, whatever the date is. All right. All right, I have a motion, I have a seconded. Doc?
You've confused me, I'm a simple guy.
I was afraid of that.
Yeah.
No, not just you, I think everybody...
No, I say that, I am...
So if we can go back over the motion again...
I'm a simple guy, yeah, explain the motion here, I think I understand it, explain it.
It's my intention to offer two motions, Doc. The first motion is to approve the report. Second motion will be an up and down vote on the contents of the report.
Okay, so I approve.
Okay, this is to approve the report. And to convey, and to send it, convey it to the town council. So Doc says approve, okay? Rupert, Tom? Aye. No, this is going to be a roll call vote, guys, okay? Steve?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. So now I'd like to make a second motion, and the language on that, if I recall, is to approve or deny, is that what it is? The, the, so my motion would be to deny the, is it deny or to recommend denial of...
It would be recommend denial.
Recommend denial of the amendments conveyed to the planning board by the town council on March 5th, is that what it was?
Third.
March 3rd? March 3rd?
Mr. Callahan, would you like me to read the language?
You mean, what I should be, what I should be reading from back here, is that what you, is that what you?
That the planning board finds the proposed amendments are not consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the goals and policies, implementation program, and other applicable elements. Further, that the board has recognized and considered the purposes of zoning and finds these amendments to do not meet those stated purposes.
God, I'm ventriloquist, thank you, that's exactly what I wanted to say.
Sorry.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, again, a roll call. Steve?
Nick.
Doc?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes. Vote carries four to one. All right, staff?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Anybody from the board? Do we have my favorite motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded? Everybody motioned to adjourn, so nobody can second it. Rupert, would you second it, Steve, somebody?
Second.
Second, all a favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming, thank you for your time. Hold on a second, guys, hold on, Tom, Steve, Tom, Steve. This is coming back, so you have two options. You can either give Heidi our books and our notes and everything, or you can keep your notes and books. It depends on whether...